Please stand for a side of the nation. Also, at this time, I would like to, for everybody to remember, Mr. Angelo Giacchetti, one of our school board members, 28 years, former president, he passed away on February 17th.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to all of the nations under our umbrella, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Also, at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Dan Off, our recently appointed school board member. Good luck to him, Mr. Off. Thank you for all your time we're going to have to be spending here. Roll call, Mrs. Beal.
This is the board's president. Here. Here.
Here.
Mr. Landman.
Here. President. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of P1A on page two and AF5A on page five. You have a motion to add to that?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Is there a question on the motion? All those in favor, say a "aye".
Aye.
At this time, if there's any person in the audience that I can speak on the, any item on the agenda, please stand. Identify yourself, where you live, or what item on the agenda you'd like to speak on. Because we have nobody who wants to speak tonight. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 15, 2017.
Second. Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying "aye".
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to have a motion to approve the attendance records of committee meetings and work sessions. Work session made 14, 2016, director committee meeting, March 7, 2017.
Make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second, correct, I'm right.
What's your question? Oh, I'm sorry, this is 2017. We can go to that on the agenda. Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying "aye".
Aye.
There's no opposing. The school board meeting will be televised this coming Saturday, March 18, 5 o'clock, on Atlantic Broadway, on Channel 17. You can also watch the school board meeting on YouTube. Just go to South Indian Township Television, or check the Laurel Highlands School District website for other televised stops. Dr. Walsh, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Settick. At this time, before I give my report, all students who are here for recognition today, if you could please walk back to the back of the auditorium. We will have administrators back there to line you up for your awards this evening. Thank you. First, I would like to thank all of those who have donated to Mr. Giacchetti on fundraising. Mr. Giacchetti, as Mr. Settick mentioned earlier, was a 28-year board member here, and we are trying to help him out and his family, and we are eliciting donations to cover our costs, and right now, we are doing pretty well with that. I would like to thank all those who are donating. I would like to thank, and congratulations to Mr. Miller, Mr. Gates, and the students and staff, and the pre-K programs for making this a tastic event at the high school a couple of weeks ago, a great event. And Mr. Senzo, you made a great cap to hat. Thank you for donating your time and addressing up. We had a great event, and we are in the process of transitioning pre-K students to our buildings, and we are pushing literacy, we are pushing books to all students, and we're making sure that all of our students are ready and capable to learn when they hit the kindergarten door. So, once again, thank you, Mr. Gates and Mr. Miller. And I would also like to send out a thank you to all elementary schools for the donations they gave to the academic foundation Chinese auction. I was notified today by the academic foundation that those baskets were really what took them over the top for the dinner and musical show that was put on this past weekend. So, thank you to all elementary schools for the donations there. News in the district. First, athletics. WPIAL participants at Trees Pool, March 2nd and 3rd. These are our swimmers and divers. Girls, Kristen Bane, Gwyneth Hamilton, Rachel Roscoe, Lexie Costalink, Jenna Roscoe, Brittany Silbo. They all qualified at that swimming event. At the PIAAs, Lexie Costalink managed the PIAA at Bucknell on March 15, 16, and 17. She's there now. WPIL participants at Moon High School and Trees Pool on March 2nd and 3rd for the boys. Jonathan Eck, Dylan Rice, Cameron Liza, Jonathan Lewis, Brandon Thomas, Jacob Johnson. All of those students went to the Whipples and the PIAAs, which are also going on at the same place this weekend. The following boys will move on to the diving and swimming championships at Bucknell. Jonathan Eck, Dylan Rice, Cameron Liza, Brandon Thomas, and Jacob Johnson. Congratulations and best of luck to those swimmers. Our boys, yes. Our boys' basketball team was a playoff participant, a first-round winner, and finished the season 18-6 record. Congratulations to Mr. Hager and his basketball team. Also, in case some of you may not know, this past weekend, we had Ian Edenfield, a junior here at the high school, became the first Mustang wrestler in the history of the school district to earn a medal at the annual PIAA Individual Wrestling Tournament held this past weekend in Hershey, Pennsylvania. He advanced to the championship round and earned a silver medal, and he lost in a 6-2 double overtime, I mean, in a one-point double overtime decision. And anyone who knows anything about wrestling or any school, to make it to that level, to be competitive, and make it to the winner's circle is a feat in itself. Congratulations to Mr. Ian Edenfield. Great work. For the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science in Region 8, competition was held at California University, Pennsylvania. The following Laurel Highlands senior high students were recognized at this event. Gillian Mahalco, Elizabeth Purnell, Hope Purnell, Amanda Gregg, Teresa Fisher, Jonathan Porter. Two students, Taylor Smith and Jason Prentice, were awarded the PJAS First Awards, which qualifies them to the state competition at Penn State University and State College in May. Congratulations to those science students on job well done. Our Academy of Finance team placed third in the 2017 High School Business Pitch Competition held March 1 at Penn State Fayette. This was the first year Laurel Highlands competed in competition, and our team had only placed third, but brought home $200. Our pitch was for a student-run coffee shop called Common Grounds. Congratulations to Mr. Bryce and those students looking into the business world and learning the things that they need to learn in order to be successful in pitching their ideas and earning revenue on your own as entrepreneurs. Good work. Finally, our First in Math. If you have a student in elementary schools, you are aware of this. And our First in Math program is a competition amongst all students, and it's friendly, it's online, it's in a gaming-type environment. And Mr. Gates took the liberty to look at the national and state rankings and found the following. Hatfield Elementary School ranks number 49 nationally. Hatfield ranks number 20th in the state. Hatfield 5th Grade ranks 28th nationally, and Hatfield 5th Grade ranks number 11th in the state. So, congratulations to the work that Hatfield's putting in to First in Math. That concludes my report, Mr. Settick.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Are student representatives here?
Before we begin, I'd like to congratulate the students receiving awards tonight, getting with elementary schools. From RW Clark Elementary, Remare Morgan, 1st grade. From Hatfield Elementary, in 1st grade, Amelia Michael. From Hutchinson Elementary, all from 1st grade, Mason Chips. Jacob Valente. And Giada Ship. Lastly, from George C. Marshall Elementary, both from 1st grade, Hayden Childs. Lastly, Kingston Datta. The next set of names are from Laurel Highlands Middle School. The first student is Madigan Dickmar, 8th grade, Adobe Photoshop from Mr. Lloyd. And next is Morgan Feig, 8th grade, Technology Education, Mr. Valente. And last, we have Brandon Pitti, 6th grade, Technology Education, Mr. Valente. Congratulations to everyone receiving an award.
Next up, we got high school students. From our Department of Science, Alex Imperio, Grade 11, 5th grade, Biology. Next, from Trigonometry in Crete, California, Tommy Codrick, Grade 11. From Grade 9, Jordan O'Brien for Honors Geometry. From Grade 12, Haley Sutton for Publications. For Grade 11, Robert Junk, Video Production 1. For Digital Communications 2, Brittany Goud. For Grade 11, Abigail Williams, 1st grade, 4th. Another 11th grader, Aaron Eggnoff, for Physical Education. From Family and Consumer Sciences Department, Hannah Stewart, Grade 10. From our JROTC Department, Ray Martin, Grade 9, first-year cadet. From Grade 10 to JROTC, Shannon Wong, 2nd year to go. From 11th grade, Justin John, from JROTC, 3rd year cadet. I'd like to thank all the students for receiving their voices.
Before everybody leaves, Mrs. Boards would like to make an announcement.
I just want to tell you about our spaghetti dinner for Mr. Giacchetti's family. It's March 30. Anytime between 11:00 and 12:30, we will deliver in the area more or more dinners to businesses. Just call me and get it together. And then again, at 4:00 to 8:00, we will start our spaghetti dinners. They're $8 for the dogs, $5 for children, and we have a beautiful Chinese auction. We'd love to see everybody coming. Help us out. Thank you very much.
That dinner will be held at the high school right here. Thank you very much. Let me take a brief moment to... Anybody that'd like to leave? Okay, we're going to exhume the gathering. Academic Foundation report, Mr. Bryce is not here. It's moved to Strategic Plan, Board Policy, and Mrs. DeAndrea.
There is one, um, item, this policy, we're actually going hard, last time, on the end of, but I do have a comment on the board policy. Mr. Landman and I are dedicated, very committed, to make our curriculum the best. There's always room for improvement, and I'd like to share with you a motto from my first training district that still rings true today. Good, better, best. Never let it rest until your good is better and your best is the best. I want to make sure that our curriculum is the best at Laurel Highlands, and it is meeting every student's needs. We plan on scheduling a curriculum meeting and a policy meeting. We kind of hold them together the week of March 27 through 31st. The last curriculum meeting was a great success. I want, my goal is to dump, dump the parents, the teachers, the students, the input. This will be announced, correct, after hours, as soon as you confirm a date. And my goal with Mr. Landman is if we have to have a curriculum meeting every single week, because we are soon going to be entering scheduling, then we will do so. We are committed and we are dedicated. So, those that were in attendance last week, I thank you. I urge you to tell more. This is the core. This is the meat and potatoes behind the district. So, please make sure you are looking for those dates and that you are in attendance. Thanks.
Mrs. DeAndrea, you gonna make a motion for that? I'm sorry, what, the agenda?
Yes, that was moved to be a dead note due to language change. That concludes my report.
Strategic Committee, Mrs. Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Settick. One day, permission to approve summer school programs imposed or positions. I'd like to put that in the motion at this time.
So moved.
Question on the motion. All those in favor? Aye. All those?
Number two is informational. Kindergarten registration will be held during the week of May 2 through May 5, 2017. Dates and times are close. Tuesday, May 2, Hutchinson Elementary School, 9:00, 11:00, and 1:00 to 3:00. Wednesday, May 3, Clark Elementary School, 9:00, 11:00, and 1:00 to 3:00. Thursday, May 4, Hatfield Elementary School, 9:00, 11:00, and 1:00 to 3:00. Friday, May 5, Marshall Elementary School, 9:00, 11:00, and after lunch, 1:00 to 3:00. For more information on dates, times, and registration procedures, please contact and expect the school, or visit the district website at www.lhsd.org. Children entering kindergarten for the 2017-18 school term must be five years old, on or before August 31, 2017. There will be no exceptions. Also, as Mrs. DeAndrea mentioned, and Dr. Walsh's going to get to this on a date, there will be a curriculum meeting scheduled week after next, and we'll give a vacuum on when we have an escape. Thank you very much, Mr. Blue Park.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Roll call, we have a meeting in the library.
Yes, meeting party scheduled in the library.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Building to Grounds Committee, Mrs. Boards.
PG1A, except with the red, the red permission of Mr. Craig McKee, supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Director Board 17. Mr. McKee has eight-plus years of dedicated service to the district. I'd like to make a motion to accept.
We have a second. Is there a second, Mrs. Boards?
No.
All those in favor, signify by saying "aye"?
Aye. I'd like to say, good luck to Mr. McKee in New Bantry. Thank you. That concludes my report.
And I would also like to piggyback on what this board said. Mr. McKee has made a great difference throughout the district from the money that he saved, not only to our high school renovation project, but to all buildings. He is very knowledgeable on many things, Buildings and Grounds and nature. So, all of this board, I wish you the very best. I thank him for everything that he's done for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Mrs. Glad.
F1A, I'd like to put into the form of a motion the treasure and budget report for February, which is Exhibit A.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying "aye"?
Aye.
F2A, I'd like to make a motion for payment of the bills for February, which is Exhibit B.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying "aye"?
Aye.
F3, this is informational, the investment report, which is February's investment report, which is Exhibit C. F4A, I'd like to put into the form of a motion the federal report for February, which is Exhibit D. Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying "aye"?
Aye.
Person of favor.
F5, Student Activity Athletic Funds for February, Exhibit E. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying "aye"?
Aye.
And F6 is informational, the board summary report for February, which is Exhibit F. Mr. Settick, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Glad. Food Service Committee, Mrs. Boards.
FS1A, Cafeteria Report, February, Exhibit G. I'd like to make a motion to accept this report.
Is there a second? Question on that motion. All those in favor, signify by saying "aye"?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Security and Transportation, Mrs. Beal. Human Resources Committee, Mrs. Glad.
P1A, I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional substitute teachers that are listed under Exhibit H. Those will be regular certified substitutes and emergency certified substitutes.
Second.
Question on the motion. Do we have roll call in that today?
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Settick?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
P2A, this is request for retirements, other leaves and resignations. Except the retirement of Mrs. Terry Brooks, 3rd grade teacher at Hutchinson Elementary School, affected at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Mrs. Brooks has 18 years of dedicated service to the district. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion.
Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Settick?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
I'd like to congratulate Ms. Brooks on 18 years of the district's work.
This is an informational section. Professional employee A will be on leave from approximately April 27, 2017, through the end of the current school year. The employee will be using accumulated sick days and personal days, and then FMLA if needed. P3A, conference requests. A to approve Mr. Eric Gatis to attend the 48th Annual PAFPC Conference on May 7 through the 10th, 2017. The conference, which is mandatory, fulfills the Title I initiative entitled Compliance Not Complacent. This will be held at Seven Springs in Champ PPA. The approximate cost is $1,080 plus mileage, which will be paid by Title I. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion.
Second.
Roll call, Kim.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Settick?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
B, approval for Dr. Jesse T. Wallace III to attend the Forum for Leadership and Education Conference in Bantry Springs, April 26 through 28, 2017. The cost is not to exceed $500. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal? Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
Second, yes.
Motion passes.
Approval for Mr. Paul Livingston, high school science teacher, to serve as the district's sponsor at the PJAS Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science State College Competition on May 14th to 16th, 2017, and this is at Penn State University Park. The approximate cost is $500 room, board, and mileage. This is mandatory for the district to have a chaperone in order for our students to compete in the PJAS state competition. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
We have a slot for this. Can we play?
If it's during the school day, yes, we will have to have a slot.
I would just like to say that PJAS is very important competition for students. There are scholarship monies that are available to students who do it all the years that they're eligible, which is from eighth grade until seniors in high school. It's very important. I was hoping that we would have more students be competing in this. I'm a very strong proponent of it, so it's very worthwhile and I think our students should really be encouraged to attend and participate in this competition.
Finish roll call.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
Thank you.
D, Approval for Mr. Mark Santor, high school music teacher, to serve as the district's sponsor at the PMEA Region Band, March 22nd to the 24th, 2017, at Sharon High School. The approximate cost is $400 for room, board, and mileage. It is, again, mandatory for the district to have a chaperone in order for our students to compete in the competition. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Is there a slot needed for this one, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we're three million in the hole. I can't come to the pass on that one, too.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
Seven aces, one pass.
P 4A, this is their approved additional substitute employees for support personnel. We have none at this time. P 5, Accept with regret the retirement of Mr. Jeffrey A. Popson, 12-month head custodian at the middle school, effective May 1st, 2017. Mr. Popson has 26 years of service with the district. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Popson, who has borne 26 years of service with the Laurel Island School District. He's been very instrumental in doing, at the beginning of the school, with the lighting for the board. Congratulations, Mr. Popson.
P 6, Mr. Mark Marvel was a successful bidder for the 12-month high school custodian position, 3pm to 11pm shift, per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. This requires board action, as it was a promotion and was retroactive to actual move of January 23rd, 2017. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 P 7, Miss Mary Jean Hathill was a successful bidder for the 12-month head custodian position at Marshall Elementary School. This is the 7am to the 3pm shift, per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Again, this requires board action, as it is a promotion. The effective date will be Monday, March 20th, 2017. I'd like to put this into the form of a motion.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 P 8, Mrs. Tammy Phillips was a successful bidder for the cafeteria cook manager position at the middle school, per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. This requires board action, as it is a promotion. The effective date of this will be March 27th, 2017. I'd like to put this into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 P 9, Paraprofessional Update, which will be Exhibit I. I would like to place this into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And finally, P 10, Approved Request by Support Personnel Employee B for an unpaid leave with current health benefit coverage through June 30th, 2017. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
I'm going to vote no on that.
Seven aces, one pass.
Is that a Georgia report?
Yes, that concludes our report.
As letting in extracurricular activities, committing Mr. Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Sebby. Under 1A, Accept Resignation of Ethan Milburn as Assistant President Baseball Coach, effective immediately. Vacated position was posted and all of these gentlemen have their clearances in, their next names are in my to list. Resignation of Ethan Milburn, effective immediately. I'll put that into the motion.
Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post?
Under 2A, Commissioner Alex Marrow is Assistant President Baseball Coach, 2017 season. Recommended by Head Baseball Coach. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion.
Second.
Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
AKA.
3A, Permission to approve Tom Vecchiola and Francis Zinkowski as volunteer assistant coaches for the baseball program, 2017 season, as recommended by Head Coach Scott DeMery. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion.
Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
AKA.
Before you, the last item, under athletic and extracurricular activities, Permission to have Eric Capen Kenny as Assistant Softball Coach for the 2017 season. I'd like to put that into the form of a motion at this time.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Sebby. That concludes our report.
Big ol' vice.
There are grievances at the board level at this time, under the list of reports. There has been no movement with regard to the refinance bond issue with the FCI. As reported at that last meeting, the conditions have not been such that it would be beneficial for the CTI to move forward with that, so that still remains on hold. Under L 3, the approval of the local branch request, Exhibit J, understanding that all the necessary requirements are in place for that to be approved, and would request that the board consider a motion.
We have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to go to the addendums on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sebby. I would like the board to consider a motion for permission to approve Annette Garbell and Gary Rankin as additional Laurel Island drivers for first student transportation. All their clearances are in and they are, and have passed all the necessary requirements.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
No second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like the board to consider a motion for approval of successful bidder for substitute teacher/mentor for after-school project award program.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would ask the board to consider a motion for permission to revise the 2016-2017 school calendar to use Thursday, April 13th, 2017, as a school makeup day due to snow.
Make a motion. Second.
Question on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post?
I would like the board to consider a motion to award Amy McCaffney as a successful bidder for the 12-month, 3pm to 11pm shift at the high school, per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. This requires board action, as it is considered a promotion. Effective date will be Monday, March 20th, 2017.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
AKA.
I would like the board to consider a motion to award Judy Nicholson as the successful bidder for the seven-hour cafeteria helper position at the middle school, per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. This, again, requires board action, as it is considered a promotion. Effective date will be Monday, March 20th, 2017.
That would be March 20th. I'll make that motion.
I'd like to correct that to March 27th, please.
You have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
AKA.
I would like the board to consider approval for the procedure that a student may only take two credits of physical education aquatics to count towards their high school graduation requirements. This includes any summer physical education courses taken by the student. The administration reserves the right to allow a student to make up physical education and/or aquatics credits and/or elective credits without penalty and/or advancement to QPA or GPA ranking or total credits earned.
Question on that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yep, made a motion. Your second?
Aye.
No votes?
Second.
I do have a question. They are able to take an additional M or aquatic class, but I do want to confirm if they were taking a study hall, they could make up their half of credits, but they just can't advance their class grants by credits or GPA, correct?
You are correct, Mrs. DeAndrea. That's the intent of the motion. I'd like that roll call in this place.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
AKA.
I would like the board to consider a motion to approve permission for the administration to post and advertise with the position of Director of Buildings and Grounds, and this is only a posting for candidates. This is not hiring.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Motion dies.
I'd like the board to consider the approval of permission to approve, in accordance with the current collective bargaining agreement pay scale, a four-month extension until June 30th of 2017 for the current athletic director. At such time, July 1st, 2017, an additional three-year extension will be awarded to the athletic director, AKA Mr. Mark John.
So moved.
Question on? Question on the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Landman?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Boards?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sebby?
Yes.
Eight A's.
I'd like the board to consider approval of a resolution to nominate Mr. Dan Hoff to stand for election through the intermediate Unit One Board of Directors for a three-year term. Mr. Chris's term of office is expiring on June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
There are others.
I'd like the board to consider a motion for professional employee C. That employee will be off on leave using accumulated sick and personal days beginning approximately May 5th of 2017 until the end of the 16-17 school year. I'm sorry, this is not an actual item. This is only information that came to us today. I apologize. That concludes the addendum. Mr. Seppic? Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Under general matters, the Career Technical Institute report. I'm just going to do a brief report on that. They've appointed Dr. Sidney Shaw to be acting director at CTI while Dr. Jeffries is off on leave. Also, the Laurel Highlands School District is going to receive $63,730 that was in excess of their budget last year, which is good news. And there was a large contingency of students receiving awards, and I'm not sure what all those awards were, and we'll have that for them, we'll have that for you next week, next month, excuse me. We have no intermediate unit report, any other business? Ladies and gentlemen? We have a motion for adjournment.
Stand by, please, sir.
Where? Excuse me.
I'd just like to...
Please identify yourself and where you live.
I'm in Jacobville. My granddaughter is here. We can...
Where do you reside?
I'm in Fort Eusthene.
Oh, I would like to know.
I live out of your quarter. Is there a concern?
A word?
Is there a concern?
Please like to know if you're within the school district. That's all.
My granddaughter attends here.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I'm actually, I graduated. Mrs. Beal, even though I understand your concern with the deficit, I would just like to ask that we look at these types of competitions the same way we look at our athletic competitions. Both the PJAS and the PMEA are academic competitions. Not only have these students given up a lot of their time, they have also given up a lot of their money to get to this point. So I would just like to ask you, the next time something comes up, that you give your concerns to them, just like everything's good with the athletics part. Thank you.
Those motions all passed.
It doesn't matter. I just want to, I'm concerned that we have somebody that doesn't think that academic competition is work, that it's mine and yours.
I thought you were going to say that it wasn't work.
Well, and you should have voted for it.
Excuse me. I sat up here for the kids. I've worked here 30 years. I love the kids. It has nothing to do with the kids.
But it does, and you don't vote for it. That's all.
Excuse me, that's all.
Yeah, we're three million in the hole.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Lisa A. and I live in South Union Township. My children attend the schools. This is in regards to Laurel Highlands. I mean, we can't hear you, you're not working from home. Thank you. My name is Lisa A. Sorry, I started a lot of the form. Sorry, just to distract them. My name is Lisa A. and I live in South Union Township. I have two children that attend the schools. This is in regards to the recent addition of the middle school baseball program. It's my belief that this board passed the motion for an eighth-grade middle school baseball team in the spring of 2016, last year. I don't know the exact date, but I do remember seeing the beating on TV. So, we were told they were having an eighth-grade baseball team. They recently had tryouts, and to our surprise, this eighth-grade team became a combined seventh and eighth-grade team. And I guess my question was, you know, when was that changed to become a combined team? And you may or may not know, there were 35 to 40 young boys that were very interested to play on this team. And in this day of our youth, losing so much interest in sports and academics and many other things in lieu of playing video games and other things, I just wanted to know, you lost an opportunity to engage these kids, because 20 kids didn't make that team. So, my question to you is...
I think the reason for that, ma'am, is the fact that the scheduling of the middle school baseball program is very difficult, and I had spoken to Mr. John about it, in fact, I see it about every day. And it's very difficult to come up with a schedule, and I don't believe that we could accommodate, the schedule could accommodate two teams. There are other opportunities at Hark, Oliver.
Right.
There are AAU teams, and there are...
And we do participate in both of those opportunities. But, you know, it's something special when you play for your own school.
Yeah, but the problem is that there's just not, there's just not enough programs that offer a middle school baseball.
Right.
And that's why we couldn't have two teams.
And I applaud you for bringing the program back, because I've told you it's been about 15 years since you last had a program, but I guess why was it necessary to combine the teams? You know, when the board approved an eighth-grade team, you know, do we know why that occurred?
Ma'am, there was never a middle school or junior high school baseball team.
Ever? Yeah, I'm told about 15 years ago.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was, it was approved as a middle school, both seventh and eighth grade, not just eighth grade.
Because I was told it was an eighth-grade team.
No, that's, I don't think that was the intended. We apologize if that was the change.
As a feeder program to the high school team.
Yes. Mr. Lehman, if you want to address that.
If I remember correctly, I checked with your job, but I'm pretty sure it was approved as a middle school program, which would include seventh and eighth grades. And I think it was a strictly seventh-grade team, an eighth-grade team, but I don't know if your school...
Yeah, that would be my recommendation in the future, is to have two teams. We do that for basketball and many other sports.
But, ma'am, we would like to have it, but there's no schedule that we could come up with to have two teams.
But could you rotate the kids, you know, because there's probably four to five games a week, can you split the kids in the games? You know, this set of kids, you play these days and these times.
You mean like an A team and a B team?
You could do that. I'm told that they tried this at the high school last year, or in previous years, with ninth-grade team.
Well, there is a ninth-grade baseball team.
Well, that is something we might be able to look into, but I think right now, the teams that they play, most of them in Westmore County, because the teams in that county just don't have, you know, some baseball programs. So it is something we could look into, maybe putting two teams in the league and just play the same teams you take. Right now, I think it was just scheduled as a middle school team. But one of the problems was why we had to wait a year, was there were enough teams around here to play, build a team, and I was going to look into doing that, and we just couldn't get other schools to build a middle school team, or a ninth-grade team. So that is something we can look into, because there's enough kids who would love to discipline.
Yeah, you had, you had a tremendous outpouring of young men that would have loved to play.
Yeah, I saw that you mentioned 35 kids.
Yeah, well, I think it may have even been more. I don't know the actual number that attended the tryouts, but it was a lot.
Exactly. That's our intent to discourage any young man or young lady who plays baseball or softball. We want to build as many kids as we can that are interested. So that's, that's good news, it was 35, so we did it.
At least.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it's great, and it was a great opportunity.
But again, I think it was passed last year, correct, along as a middle school team. In fact, one of the concerns was, we weren't sure we would get, you know, that many kids out to build one team, but that's something moving forward, which definitely gets, and I appreciate your concern.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's wonderful.
Mr. Lehman, I actually have a question. I think that so many kids are interested and want to participate, and we surely do not want to discourage any, anyone, any students. Is there any way that we can still include them, and there can be a different division so that they can be a part of the team still? Is that something that we could look into?
I'd mention with your job on that, to see if the league would put another team in. There are a lot of schedules already made, I don't know if that could happen right now, but it is something we can look at, but we can...